Council meeting to order, I would invite you all to rise and join in the first allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call, please? Here.
Matt Tyer?
Here.
Travis Golden?
Here.
Scott Merle Daphne?
Wiley Therry?
Here. Okay, you all emailed a copy of our minutes from our July 3rd meeting. I'd be looking for a motion to approve those minutes. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from our July 3rd meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay, the first thing on our agenda this evening is actually to close the city council meeting and to open a public hearing regarding the tax abatement for Hoosier Pattern and RH Warehouse. Jeremy and Keith, if you guys would want to come forward. I would look for a motion then to suspend the city council meeting and open a public hearing.
So move.
Second, one, one motion at a time. Close the city council?
So move.
Suspend it.
Suspend the city council meeting. I have a motion from Wiley, a second from Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. And then I would look for the motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second from Tyer to open a public hearing in reference to the tax abatement for Hoosier Pattern and RH Warehouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Jeremy, thank you for coming this evening.
Good to be here. We are here, I would like to provide you with the publisher's claim, a proof of publication of tonight's meeting, as well as the verified statement of proof of filing notice to the various taxing entities.
Make those a matter of record?
I would like those made a matter of record, there's an original question too. And then I have a proposed confirming resolution, there are three copies here. I was able to receive some guidance from the city attorney. And so I made some edits to those that are necessary. And then, to the extent that you would like some additional information, obviously keep it here. Do answer your questions. As you may recall, we do want to make it abundantly clear that not all of these things are from this year. So, excuse me, you've been given a spreadsheet previously that shows the breakdown of when things were spent. And we're asking that both the personal property and the real estate improvements be allowed to be in this tax abatement.
Okay. First thing we need to do is make the advertisement a matter of record. So move. Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Verified statement of proof of filing notice.
Okay, we need to make this a matter of record as well, the verified statement of proof of filing notice. So move. Second. I have a motion and a second for that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. All right. Jeremy, if you want to, and Keith, if you want to speak a little bit on your behalf of what you're requesting. I think we've all kind of went over this before, but just for the record.
I, I will start and then I'll let Keith actually provide you with useful information. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we came to court for you for a tax abatement. Keith was going to buy, Hoosier Pattern was going to acquire a new 3D printer. And then when they got things going, he decided, no, that's not the route I want to go, so we withdrew that. But he made some improvements to the facility. And two years later, decided he's going to buy this next 3D printer, which will substantially enhance his business and allow for the current employees to maintain jobs, hopefully grow the business. And he's pretty confident this is the route to go. He knows a lot more about that than any of us in the room. And so that's why we're back, and that's why we're reaching back in time to ask that some of those things that were spent be allowed to be under that tax abatement. Because it's really helping this new addition of new equipment and that real estate. That, that stuff that was done for the real estate improvement is applicable for this. He invited me one time to go and I went and looked at 3D printing and then how it works and...
Hoping to see it tomorrow.
You know, and he would like anybody to come see what Hoosier Pattern is doing. And he's not afraid to say that because he, it's really, for lack of a better word, it's really great stuff that they're doing there. And it's beyond what you would think 3D printing is really about. And so, I'll shut up and let Keith tell you.
And I'll just say that the printer we had a couple of years ago just didn't meet my expectations. I mean, they, they gave us, you know, so many layers per minute and it just was never going to make it. So, I just had a decision to make and I made it that I wanted to take them out of there because we weren't going to be able to be competitive. So, you know, a couple of years went by and this printer is the same as the other two that I have in there now. And, you know, we've already hired some, some employees in expectation of this printer getting here. It's there now and it's installed. We're ready to start moving forward. So, we are going to hire more employees, up above what we've already...
You expect, expected an additional, possibly six more employees, is that what you're anticipating?
Correct.
Which will bolster your salaries?
The personal property value is 2,318,461 dollars. And then the real estate improvement is 221,235 dollars. I think it's worth noting that for a local business, like Hoosier Pattern, that's a commitment.
Two and a half million?
They're going out on a limb saying, I believe in this. So, not very many people can do that and will do.
Comments from council? Keep rolling, Keith.
Excited to see the continued growth.
Any comments here?
So the amount of the, because you have it blanked in here and I assume you left it blank because you weren't sure.
Because of the years.
Right. Okay, so the dollar amount for personal property and new manufacturing equipment would be what dollar amount? I'm just going to enter one again.
It's the 2,318,461 dollars for personal property.
Okay.
And then real estate is 221,235 dollars.
Two twenty-one?
Two three five.
Okay.
Two twenty-one, two three five.
And now I'm mistaken, I'm trying to find the statement of benefit.
Six is what he's predicting.
Six, full-time?
Jeremy, when you gave me previous one?
Yeah, that's not, that's good.
It's okay.
Yeah, the one I gave you two weeks ago.
So six new full-time employees, Keith? Okay.
Six full-time employees with approximate salaries of 175,000.
Number retained is forty-five, number added, six. What was the declaratory resolution, Phyllis? Was it? What number?
Thirteen, I believe, 2018 dash thirteen. Thirteen.
Thirteen. And what's this current resolution?
Fourteen.
And maybe determine the years.
Yeah, we kind of already discussed that once, I think we were talking ten.
That's what I thought.
Ten-year for both new manufacturing equipment and real estate improvements.
Well, we had talked earlier.
Right. Okay, that's all I needed on this.
Abatement?
Yeah.
Any other comments from council? Any other comments from Keith or Jeremy?
Or the public.
Or the public. With that, I guess the next thing we would look for would be a motion to...
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second. Motion and a second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion that we open the city council meeting?
Second.
Reopen?
Re-convene.
Re-convene.
Have a motion and a second that we reconvene the city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay, where's my agenda? So the next thing is the confirming resolution for Hoosier Pattern and RH Warehouse. Also, we'll need to remind you, after once we do this, that you'll need to have this confirmed with the redevelopment commission. And they meet next on the...
August 1st.
August 1st, yeah. So I look for a motion to introduce ordinance, or excuse me, resolution 2018 dash...
Dash fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2018 dash fourteen, by short title only. Thank you.
Second. A motion and a second to introduce resolution 2018 dash fourteen, by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Confirming the resolution number 2018 dash fourteen, City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, confirming resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Hoosier Pattern Inc. and RH Warehouse LLC.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution 2018 dash fourteen.
Second. A motion and a second for passage of resolution 2018 dash fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2018 dash fourteen has been adopted. Congratulations and wish you nothing but the best of luck in the future.
Congratulations and wish you well tomorrow with the open house.
Remind, for the public, remind them tomorrow's an open house at Hoosier Pattern. What time? In between here? Eleven to seven. So it really is a state-of-the-art facility. If you get a chance, check it out, it's really cool. Thank you, Keith, thank you both.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thanks, Jeremy. All right, how do you turn it on? What's happening? It was on earlier, if it's not on now, then the battery went dead. It's still on, okay. There you go. All right, next thing on the agenda, bear with me a moment, is a recommendation from a local citizen, Paul Ryan, if you want to come up, in regard to city code and possible code change, as well as possible recommendation in as much as a, in the humane, what's the word we're looking for? Dog catcher, humane? Humane control, yeah, thank you. Paul called me the other day, asked to be on the council agenda. And after talking to him for about a half an hour, we agreed to put him on the agenda. So, welcome, Paul, thank you for coming and...
Thank you.
Pass these around to everyone.
I'll wait till everybody gets theirs and it's like we're all ready. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing it to be added to the agenda. I know at first it was, you know, back and forth and we got it figured out. And I understand, I understood everything perfectly, I wouldn't want those calls either. I also want to take, thank you guys, the city council, for taking the time and the consideration. So basically, we all know why I'm here tonight. Certainly an unfortunate incident in which the dog was ultimately put down by a city police officer. I'm here to make some proposals and purely that, to be taken into consideration, suggestions, proposals, however you want to word it. To ensure that all possible resources and options are utilized and exhausted before a decision of putting down an animal was ever made again. I want everyone here to, to understand that I realize and I feel both parties share accountability for what happened. It was unfortunate and it's my firm belief that in order to move on, that provisions be made to and considered by you, the council. I've done my very best to try to make sure I'm as informed as possible. And I've done a lot of researching, I've talked to a lot of people and everybody that I've talked to has been great, including you. I've learned a lot and you'll have to forgive me ahead of time for anything that I may have misunderstood in the process because I'm by no means an accountant and I'm going to spout some numbers off here and...
That's fine.
And so, so let's move on, put together the packet for you guys to kind of follow along with. Tonight I'm going to be proposing the following amendment to city code chapter 90.22, or the addition of code to chapter 90 of the city code on animals. Number two would be proposing that the city obtains a full-time animal control officer. Then the third proposal will be basically just where I believe that funds may be attained or diverted from existing city accounts. Now again, these are just places that I felt and I don't want to tell you guys your business. You know more fully, more than anybody, where money can be attained for certain things. And simple measures, the fourth thing would be simple measures in order to ensure that animal care officers or control officers and city officers have more tools at their disposal when dealing with aggressive animals. And lastly is just that you guys, the city council of Decatur, make a commitment to the citizens that represents that all or some of my proposals will be implemented in a timely manner so that this great city can continue to grow and improve and move on from that incident and show that we can try to come up with some kind of resolution here. All right, so moving on to the first proposal, basically it's the amendments to city code. The following code concerns the duties of the humane officers, peace officers, sheriffs, or health officers. And it states, "In the event of a violation of this subchapter, it shall be the duty of any duly appointed humane officer, peace officer, sheriff, or health officer to seize such fowl or animal and provide the necessary care and attention for the same. Such fowl or animal may be redeemed within two days of the seizure thereof by the owner paying the cost of all such care and attention. And if not so redeemed, the officer seizing the same may dispose of such fowl or animal in a humane manner." Now I realize that this code is for basically farm animals. Is what I gathered concerning horses and cattle and other various types of animals and of that nature. What I'm proposing is that it be amended to include the seizure of dogs and cats and to, and if it can't be done, to maybe create a whole new code within the chapter that concerns dogs. But what I, what I'm asking is to add the language saying that said-appointed officers must utilize and exhaust all available resources before deciding to put an animal down when trying to seize that animal. I also would recommend language that would ensure that appointed officers try their best to incapacitate the animal after all resources and tools have been utilized instead of ending its life. Now I realize that for the most part, that's going to be really hard to do. You know, so, but I feel if it's in there, then it's at least stated. If this particular code, like I said, can't be amended, then I propose that it be added to subchapter, it's a chapter 90 concerning dogs specifically.
Can we take these one at a time? That was, that's the first proposal, right?
Yeah, if you have questions.
Before you go, is that all on that particular one?
That was all I had to say.
Yeah, I think what we can do is we can, we can look at this. One of the things we oftentimes do whenever there's a city code and we're considering possibly changing it is we look at other municipalities and see how theirs is worded. And if it makes more sense, and I'll bow to you that we will, we'll look at other municipalities, code of ordinances, and see how theirs is worded.
There's another suggestion that I'll have, that'll come up here and I'll link to you about looking at Bluffton and Wells County and how they do...
So in reference to that, right there, the, the actual code on seizure of a wild animal or a loose animal, we will definitely look into that and we can respond back, okay?
I appreciate that. So secondly, the, the obtaining a full-time animal, animal control officer for the city. I believe in light of the recent event that, that basically dropped me here tonight, I, you know, speaking with numerous individuals, that is, it is time for the city to consider hiring a full-time ACO. I'm going to list off some reasonings that I believe are good reasons. Reason one would be that it would free up our city police officers from having to answer calls concerning loose animals, wellness concerns, and so on. I talked to Chief Crowell last Friday and he did express to me that he would like to see a full-time ACO and in order to help alleviate his officers, officers happen to deal with, you know, animal calls. My second reasoning, which will be looking at Bluffton. They're a city very close in size to ours population-wise and they're able to have three full-time ACOs. Now how they fund that and pay that is they basically have, it's in conjunction with the contract that they have with the county. They split the costs fifty-fifty.
So does Wells County have three or does Bluffton have three?
Bluffton has three themselves and then, from my understanding, they pay for everything, the city pays for everything and then they got that full total bill, split it in half and then send that, forward that half, fifty percent to the county and the county reimburses them, is the way I was...
So they cover the whole county, though?
And they do cover the whole county, that's why the county pays half.
Okay.
Now, after talking to, like I said, last year's share from the county was 144,000. So the city's share was obviously 144,000. They handled 240 runs in the city of Bluffton and 117 in the surrounding county. And the calls that they handle concern loose animals, aggressive animals, deceased, and wellness checks. I believe a full-time, I'm going to refer to it as ACO from here on out, ACO would be able to handle the same calls here in Decatur and operate in much the same fashion. Another reason would be that the city's council could give the city ACO the power to levy fines within the city limits. So that, that is a way to generate some kind of revenue and compliance from citizens to make sure that they're doing their due diligence, to make sure their animals are protected and taken care of the way that city core, city code dictates. Basically, in Bluffton, they've been granted the ability to do so by the city council and that's, they're allowed to do that within the city limits. Now when they go out on calls in the rest of county, they have to have a sheriff's deputy with them and the officer will levy the fine instead, but basically it's a joint effort and I'm sure they, they assist with that. I believe at a later date that this might be the same capacity in which Decatur and Adams County might operate. And I also have been told that there are efforts with, with the county council already in motion and we urge the city to take a look at the city of Bluffton and the county of Wells as a model of what could be done here in our, our city and county. And my last reason for asking for a full-time ACO would be the ability to educate the public on the proper guidelines and codes of the city. That way, everybody's informed and they know what they did wrong and why they should be held accountable for what happens. Now, and what has to be as far as educating the public, I would, I have full faith you guys to be able to come up with something on that, that aspect. So with that being said, I'll move on to...
Let's, let's talk about this one then, for a break.
Yeah, okay, my bad.
That's intriguing to me, that Wells County or Bluffton has three full-time employees doing this. And again, I promise you, I will, I will confirm with Mayor Ellis over there, I'll confirm with him and see what he says. I'll see how it's funded. The fact that they had 240 runs in the city of Bluffton just today, I know you talked to Jenny Sprunger.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
And I talked to her, she called me this afternoon.
Right.
I think she said that this year they've been on ten runs.
Ten runs, I think...
And most of them are cats.
Part of the reason, I think, because of that is because of the contract they have with the commissioners of the county. They don't want them going out on wild goose chases. And I'm sure a lot of what the city of Bluffton has done is just that. And the reason they don't want that is because they're paid, they're paid a base salary and then they're also paid, you know, a base salary per year. And then they're paid 44 cents a mile to go out on a run. Now, you know, so basically, the logic I'm assuming is that, and this is the scenario she gave me, say there's a dog running down 27. It's going to take them, at the very least, 30 to 45 minutes maybe to get there. By the time they get there, that dog could be anywhere.
Right.
And so they're paying money for something that wasn't found. And, and I, I can understand that in some aspect, but I feel if there's a city that that dog isn't going to go far without being seen and people calling and, and we need to try to do as much as we can to get loose animals off the streets and make sure that in order for the public safety and for the dog's safety or, or other animals in that aspect. So...
Any other comments from council on his second proposal here? All interesting, like I said. Okay.
All right, let's move on and this one is touchy, I was kind of warned about this by Veronica Cohen. I, I had no respect for wanting to offend any of you and tell you your business. This is just what I, I seen that I, I felt maybe funds could come from. I don't know if that's exactly where they could come from.
Trust me, most of us, I was a council member before I was mayor, most of us think it looks like simple math and... And it's, trust me, it's very...
You look at those reports and you're just like, what is that?
Pretty confusing, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, all right, and I could be totally wrong on what I'm, I'm saying here. So, so obviously I delved into the realm of financial reports of the city, made available on the Indiana Gateway site. All references will be from the year 2017 because obviously we're in the middle. And I do realize that we are seven and a half months into this year and any balances of funds I referenced may not be the same today. So whether these funds are here now, you know, I'm just going off of what was there at the beginning of the year. And I realize that a lot of that probably might have been budgeted out already to something else. So, the first one I looked at, I, I come across city code subchapter thirty-one, or 33.12-0, which is the Local Option Income Tax Special Distribution Fund. Now this was just a one-time distribution, but it stated that 25% of the funds was departed, deposited into the city's rainy day funds. Now what the rainy day fund is used for, I am not aware of. To me, it sounds like, you know, emergency kind of funds. I don't know if that's accurate, but just having learned that and I found it on the cash investment report, beginning balance for 2017 was 649,808.86. No receipts, dispersments totaling 208,511.2. And then at an ending balance at the end of 2017, there was a balance of 441,297.84. Now obviously, I don't know what the budget is, or the balance is of, as of now. But it's just a suggestion of maybe where some money could be found to fund some of these things I've suggested. Another fund I believe is, could be utilized would be the riverboat fund, which I had a heck of a time figuring out what that was for. I finally found it last night and figured it out.
Money from the riverboat fund comes from just gambles only or is it cigarette tax also?
I think it's just riverboat gambling tax. And so they, it's wagering taxes. And it's collected in a state fiscal year. It's set aside for revenue sharing among cities, towns, and counties where the riverboats aren't located. For 2017, the beginning balance was 224,311.52. Total receipts were 55,714.47. And total dispersments were 69,509.21 with the ending balance of, I'm just going to approximate from now on, 210,000 dollars approximately. And again, that's, you know, what the balance is now, but it's just a suggestion as to where funding could come from. Then another one would be the general fund, which is used to promote economic development towards them, if I'm correct, right? The only reason I suggest diverting money from this fund is because the, the amount of money I've seen in that fund. Now it, it might be all budgeted and used up by now, who knows? Something that could be examined, but from what I've seen, at the end of 2017, there was 2 million, oh, no, sorry, that's the beginning balance. The beginning balance was 2,950,000 approximately. They had receipts totaling 4,025,000 dollars approximately. Total dispersment is of 3,700,000 dollars approximately and an ending balance for 2017 of 3,263,000 dollars. And the only reason I suggest any of that, because I know it's very specific as for the, to promote economic development and tourism. In subchapter 33.110, the city code subsection B, it states, "Authorization, the common council hereby authorize the budgeting and appropriation of funds from the general fund to pay the expense of or to reimburse city officials for expenses incurred in promoting the best interests of the city." I believe hiring a full-time ACO would fall under the best interests of the city. And like I said, I've already spouted off the numbers. Lastly, and this is a suggestion that was a comment from Veronica Cohen and you'll see in my notes here at first, but she told me, I talked to her just before I came here today. She was very helpful with everything, but her suggestion was, and I, I agree... So, um, she was very helpful with, uh, everything. But her suggestion was, and I, I agree with the suggestion is, is if, uh, and the reason she suggested, I think, should be stated as well, is that if we want an ACO as citizens of the city, that we need to be accountable and help pay for it as well. And obviously, we're, you know, some people are gonna say, well, that's what we pay taxes for and stuff like that. But there's other ways to, uh, fund it and, and maybe in, in some part or in, 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 uh, some capacity. Um, so basically, it, it's probably unpopular with the general public, um, but she suggested that raising the cost of dog licenses and fines that could be levied by a city, uh, ACO, um, which is, uh, a, a source of revenue to fund that. Now, I will state that looking at fines levied from the city of Bluffton, there was, it was about six thousand something dollars. But it's not a whole lot of money.
Right, yep. Is there a dog license currently?
I think it's like five dollars. I'm not a hundred percent on that, honestly.
You know, I have a dog and he has his shots and he has a little tag, but I don't know what part of that goes towards license.
And that's kind of the, the feeling I was getting coming here and, and it was good, because it just seems kinda hodgepodge to me and it hasn't been addressed for a long time. And, and maybe it does need addressed and, and reexamined and, uh, gone over. So, um, do you guys have any idea where money might come from? I mean, do you have a fund that money could, could be?
For additional staff, you mean?
For hiring an ACO or even just purchasing some extra equipment for, to make the, uh, officers already appointed, uh, better equipped.
Well, you know, as you, you pointed out, three different places there that we have funds, okay?
Okay.
And Phyllis is our spokesperson for how all that money gets used and budgeted. There's reasons why uh, each of those have an account balance as they do.
Right.
Uh, may, maybe I can share that with you more later. I'm not prepared to do that right now, obviously. I, I have no idea.
That's a lot of numbers to go over and-
And, uh, you know, ask for additional staff. I don't know if any money can come from any of those particular funds for staffing. No idea. Uh, you know, my, my, uh, suggestion would be for, to let me follow up with all that you've brought forward. There's a lot of very interesting things you've brought forward. You've done your homework.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm impressed. And, uh, I promise I'll, I'll call Mayor Ellis. I can't call him tomorrow. I'm in meetings all day tomorrow, but I'll get with Mayor Ellis this week. I'll talk with him and, uh, if I could get your phone number or something before you leave.
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
I'd be glad to give you a call and let you know what I find out.
I'll be great. Um, maybe if, uh, I don't know how it works, is it, is it, can it be reexamined in a, a future city council meeting?
Yeah, sure.
And brought back up and, and see what has been found.
I, I do commend you. Many times people complain and, you know, bring complaints and so forth, but they have offer absolutely no solution.
Exactly.
And so I appreciate it, because you've spent some time delving into this and does show a passion that you have in this. So for that fact, I commend you.
And that's the reason I got involved, because people were just wanting to bash each other and, and, uh, that's not conducive to getting anything solved and, and it's not conducive to getting, uh, respect reciprocated. Um, if you want respect, then you need to give it and, and go about the proper channels to get things done. Um, so with that being said, uh, if there's any other questions about funding, we can move on to the last page here. And, uh, these things are, are so, simple measures that I feel could be taken. At the very least, if anything gets done, this is, these are things that I feel should be implemented um, to better equip, um, the appointed officers and, and ACO in dealing with aggressive animals. And, uh, um, so I, obviously, I spoke with the mayor and Chief Corral. Um, in both conversations, it was suggested that tasers are ineffective. Um, because, and it was brought up because a lot of citizens were saying, well, why didn't they use tasers? And, um, uh, they're, they're of the belief that, that they're, they're ineffective because of dog spur, that the barbs of the tasers can't penetrate. And sometimes they'll just get one. So if you only have one barb, it's not gonna work. You have to have a connection. Um, in light of that, when I spoke to the manager at the Bluffton Animal Shelter, asked her about tasers, and she, and you might, you might wanna talk to them and, 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 uh, see what they have to say, but she had said that she has seen them used by city officers and county officers and that they were effective. So that, that is an option that maybe can be implemented and, and used from here on out. Um, I, I think that would probably do pretty good to incapacitate a, an aggressive animal. And then once they got incapacitated, they can contain it and, and, and safely remove the animal from the public and, and, and humanely take care of that animal and, and then follow the city ordinances, which I think is a, a observation of like fourteen days or something. Uh, so the tasers, um, you know, and, and it might not be true for all, all dogs. Every, every dog has different fur types and thicknesses of fur. And so, um, I would, I would suggest researching into that and, and see if that can be possibly used as a, uh, measure to subdue the aggressive animals. Um, now, on the incident of the tranquilizer gun, the, uh, the city police department has a tranquilizer gun. And my original post on Facebook, I don't know if any of you have seen it, basically stating that I was gonna come up here and, uh, I originally had, uh, misspoke and said, well, why didn't they utilize the tranquilizer gun? And upon talking to, to Chief Corral, um, basically, the only two officers on duty that day were there at the scene. So there was nobody to bring the tranquilizer gun to them. So they couldn't utilize it. Um, and, uh, so my suggestion would be that uh, an officer on duty always carry that tranquilizer, uh, gun in his car. And that probably could rectify needing somebody to bring it, because then somebody always have it and they could bring it to the scene, provided they're not already at another scene. Um, that, but at least it'd be out in the field and, and could be utilized. And, uh, and, and maybe that would help be able to prevent having to make that decision, put an animal down. Um, uh, the lady at the animal shelter of Bluffton, she also told me about bite sticks. Um, basically, this is very basic. Dogs bite and you shove that stick in their mouth and, and I guess that, you know, that gives them something to chomp down on. How effective that is, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it would probably warrant research and, and, uh, and maybe that could help as well. Um, armed guards. The officers could have armed guards and if the animal went to bite their arm, they wouldn't get injured. And, you know, maybe my idea is if they, they get the animal that close, then they could get control of it and, and, and do that. Um, and my last suggestion, it was a pretty simple suggestion, and I, and I don't know if it was tried and I, I'm sure it has been. I don't see why it wouldn't have been. Um, just, just trying to use treats to lure the dog into, into a cage or, or the back of a squad car. And once you got them in there, shut the door and you got them, you know? So those are my suggestions. Uh, I, again, wanna thank you guys for allowing me the time to speak. Um, I think that there is a need to address the situation and try to, and try to make some, uh, resolutions or whatever, what have you call it, for lack of a better word, to, to move forward and try to, to make it better for this city. Because it's a great city and, and, and I love living here. And so, you know, I think, you know, a lot of people would appreciate the effort. So I, thank you.
Yep. Paul, could come up here and just give me your, write your phone number on there for me? Any comments from council on, for Paul?
Thanks for coming in. I mean, you gave it great detail and give us something to look at.
Sure. You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. This is the media. Is it something in relevance to this?
Yeah.
Sure, just after. Go ahead.
My name is Katie Wilson. I'm from Lennox with Legacy Rescue. Um, I appreciate the way Paul has gone about that because I've taken a lot of backlash on our, on our Facebook page. Um, Deputy Prosecutor Tracy Nessel is my forepresident. We spoke at length. Um, just since April of this year, my rescue, I have personally gone out and taken eleven dogs. Um, one case is being prosecuted right now where an officer wasn't able to get near a dog tied to a stop sign and I was able to go get that dog. Um, two running in a park. Um, with those two, when I showed up there, the officers had it broken instead. Um, rabies pole, catch pole. And I spoke with Tracy and she talked to, um, Chief Corral at that point about the equipment that they're carrying in their vehicles. It's subcar and that's a fifty-dollar piece of equipment that can save an officer's life. It can save an animal if you can get near it. They're not a hundred percent effective. Nothing really is. Um, but those are things that precautionary, that some of those equipments, and not every car has them. And the ones that are being utilized right now are broken. And I know, I've taken from city and county. And the ele- and I've kept all of those dogs because Charlie and Carol did not have them.
What was your name again?
Katie Wilson from Lennox with Legacy Rescue. Um, so all eleven of those dogs have either been placed, rehomed with the owners or are currently with us. Um, because we're trying not to overload the county facilities as well. But there's also some instances where I've gone down to the police station and they don't have a holding facility. There's, they don't have cages necessarily in the back of the car where they can put a, you know, an aggressive dog in there. I specialized in aggressive dogs over the last ten years and unfortunately, some of these were not handleable and I wasn't even comfortable sending them out to the county facility. So training would be a big part of it as well. Thank you.
If I could add-
I appreciate that.
Add to, um, the aspect, I think, the reason why the current, um, animal patrol officers aren't utilized as much is because there is a great volunteer for here in Decatur. You have, uh, Paul's, you have, uh, the, a lot of Facebook and like a few groups that dedicate just, you know, this is your animal, you know? And, and, and a lot of times it is taken care of and rectified that way, but, um, I feel that, uh, properly trained person needs to be handling that stuff instead of having to have volunteers that could possibly, you know, be hurt and, and, you know, I, I commend their efforts, but I look at it from, you know, aspects of what if they get hurt trying to get that animal? And you're talking civil suits and litigation and all that and stuff and that, nobody wants that.
Chief Corral wasn't able to be here this evening, but Deputy Chief Mike Mayhane is here. Mike, did you have any comments? Right, yep, absolutely.
I have one question. Paul, this, the numbers that you got, like a hundred and, uh, forty-four thousand, was that from the county split it, but did you call the animal control center and were they handling all these employees or was the city?
The, the shelter?
Yes, were you?
Um, I believe that they, they handle everything in, in the capacity there. The shelter, they handle the city and the county and everything's down to me. I think that's why the city pays first and then they, they submit the bill.
So it's basically a, a separate, I guess the city and county's paying for it, but it's like a separate entity. It's a shelter that's ran?
Yeah, I guess the, the way I think that best is like a joint venture. I guess it'd be best to subscribe that.
And they house all their own animals there?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, they have the facilities and they have, uh, you know, I have a copy of the contracts that they have. It's pretty simple. It's dated from like, I don't know if you'd like to see it or-
Well, when I give you a call, I'd like, I'd like to maybe get some of the names of the people you talked to.
Yeah, sure.
Phone numbers. I'm sure you have it all, but I'll, I'll, I'll give you a call and we'll, we'll talk. Okay. And does Bluffton, do you know, does Bluffton have a dog license procedure?
I didn't get into looking into that. I kinda ran out of time when I came to look. I wanted to look into-
Sure. Well, it's something we will look into.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm sure-
For possible fun, funds.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul. I really appreciate it.
I'd make one, one more suggestion on a, a potential way to generate the income that you would need to, uh, hire an animal control officer.
In your name?
Uh, my name is Connor Boozer.
Connor Boozer.
I, uh, I just, for a community that has so many pet owning families, there's not a whole lot you can do with your pets in this town. You take them to a rural game or whatever, you know? Uh, but what if we put up a fence on one of our already public parks, the Keke Younger or something, and call it a dog park? You charge an entry fee annually to the community, people that want to utilize this dog park. Not only would that, uh, revenue, uh, source pay for the upkeep of the park, which you're already budgeted for. It would also add a, an additional revenue stream to potentially pay for this animal control officer in your out now.
Yeah, the dog park is-
Something else, you know, for dog owners to go out and enjoy the community and, I don't know.
That's not, that's a-
Very viable option.
The dog park has been on our radar for some time.
Very cool.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think it'll happen. We just haven't focused on getting it done, but it's a great idea.
Fifty dollar a year permit, your key card access to the park or whatever.
Yep.
Something like that.
The only expense we really have is putting the fence up, you know?
And then it takes the, uh, the, the money off of, instead of the taxpayers paying for this animal control officer. I know many people, adults also in this community. So it puts the, the weight of animal control on those that own the-
That do like the dogs, yeah.
So.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next order of business at the council meeting here. And that would be, um, at the Border Works meeting earlier, Border Works, uh, suggested to, uh, for city council to authorize the purchase for the real estate at the corner of First and Monroe Street. We've had an option to purchase, purchase that property and, uh, it's, tomorrow is our date. We need to exercise that option and sign a purchase agreement if we're gonna move forward with that. I would like to move forward with it and, uh, Border Works agreed with that. And I would like council's approval to proceed with the purchase agreement.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the purchase agreement for the, uh,
Property on-
Yeah, the property on corner of First Street and Monroe Street.
A second, have a motion and a second to proceed with the purchase agreement on real estate. Tim?
And authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Okay, add that to the motion, please.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. We'll get that signed and sent out to, uh, Mr. McWilliams tomorrow. Uh, next is introduction of ordinance two thousand eighteen dash fifteen, which will amend chapters fifty through fifty-four of the city code of ordinances regarding liability for invoices of city services. And this is primarily, uh, in regard to, uh, rental properties. And who's responsible for them. Kevin, you wanna come up as we do this one?
Phyllis, do you have those? See, this'll be for the third reading.
No, this is- We're not introducing it. We have not introduced it.
Did we not introduce it last time?
No, we discussed it.
That's right.
We'll do two readings this evening. We would, uh, do a third reading at our first meeting in August with this going into effect, uh, in October. And this includes, um, new utilities application forms for all the landlords to give their, their tenants. In addition to that, it also includes a, uh, property owner authorization and agreement form that all property owners would need to fill out. And get, get the city a list of all of their rental properties. And then also, uh, the new, new, uh, software that the city's invested in to allow all of the landlords' access to our, like a portal on our webpage so that they can see the activity of their, of their tenants and if they're current, behind payment or whatever. So with that, is there any discussion on it? It's been thoroughly-
Are there any property owners here that wanna comment?
Yeah, I think it's, yes.
Been discussed. We've been discussing this one since last November.
Yeah, and, uh, we've got a good package here.
Yep.
To move forward with.
The goal is, is gonna greatly help in us riding off bad debt. Nearly twenty-five thousand dollars a year in bad debt.
Right.
It's unfair to the other rate payers. Okay, ready to move forward? If not, I would look for a motion to-
What number is this?
Twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen dash fifteen.
Okay. I will make a motion to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen, short title, ordinance of the common council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapter fifty through fifty-four of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen, a supplemental regarding liability for invoiced city services.
Make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its first reading by short title only. Would have roll call vote, please.
Greg Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulham, yes. Why, like third?
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen, short title, ordinance of the common council of City Decatur, Indiana, which amends chapters fifty through fifty-four of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand and fifteen, a supplemental regarding liability for invoiced city services.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen on its second reading. Would have roll call vote, please.
Greg Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fulham, yes. Why, like third?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen for its third reading on August first.
It's August seventh.
Yes.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen for its third reading at our city council meeting on August seventh. For passage later that meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that ordinance has been tabled until our next city council meeting for passage.
I want to comment on that. Those forms are now available on the website. So, yep, on the utilities page and then also under pay now. They're available now. The portal for all citizens should be available by the end of the week, maybe, not first of the week, actually.
And if any landlords need any help or assistance in getting an account on the portal to contact specifically you, Kevin, or?
Yes, or just call utilities office. Any of us can help.
Okay. I just want to publicly thank Kevin to put hours of, many hours of work into this. I still consider you the new utilities director and we threw a big one at you and you've handled the commentary with the landlords and us very well, so thank you. Thanks for your efforts, Kevin.
He's always a study. I mean, you've always just, matter of fact.
Melissa. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Hey, there's only two copies. So we need a third one when they sign it.
We're willing to have that.
Well, are you, are you going to speak on behalf for Greg? Are we doing that tonight or what?
I think we can wait on Greg if you like.
I think we will go ahead so that we can proceed with budget information or whatever. This evening Greg Kitson from Greater Decatur was to have come and presented to council. In two thousand and fifteen, we developed a plan for capital funds for the city and we set aside fifty, excuse me, five hundred thousand dollars annually for five years for capital improvements. And that began in two thousand and fifteen. And it's been a great thing. And I am going to allow Melissa to speak on behalf for Greg this evening and she has some information here that Greg presented to me this afternoon. And Melissa, if you can, I'll try to support you here.
As the mayor mentioned, the first thing you have on your stack of papers is a reminder of the resolution that was created that designated the two and a half million dollars over five years for community development projects. And this came from our stellar plan, this was included, so that's where a lot of the funding and the designation of the projects came from. On page two, this color coded, this was our original list that went along with the resolution, is proposed projects that two and a half million dollars could be spent on. And this gives you a status update of where those original projects are. And as you can see, most of those projects are either completed, in process, or upcoming. So to look at this four and five years out from when the city started with, with our stellar communities plan. And one thing Greg emphasized this afternoon and I want to share with everybody, this is a list that the City of Decatur has accomplished. It's not just city council, not just Greater Decatur. It's something that all of the city has accomplished and we should all be very proud of that we've moved forward on this project list. So the third and final page is kind of an accounting of where we are with this two and a half million dollars. And based on everything that's been spent so far and committed in two thousand and eighteen, there's roughly six hundred and ten thousand dollars remaining from that original two and a half million dollars. So in two thousand and eighteen, the projects that were designated were funding for, built out of the first floor of the Second Street Loft.
Give us the amounts.
That was two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand to be set aside for Hannah Nutman and twenty thousand for a marketing campaign. So that totaled four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I believe it was thirty that we spent for the marketing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
But thirty is carried over.
Thirty would be carried over.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thirty was carried out and twenty over.
I'm going out of order on your sheet.
Okay.
So the proposed funds for two thousand and nineteen, about six hundred and ten thousand dollars that was left, we'd like to designate for some street scape work, Hannah Nutman work, some additional materials for the Madison Street Plaza, and of course, community projects that seem to come up that we're not ready to designate yet. So in total, from the funds that we haven't, we won't have spent in two thousand and eighteen, plus the funds left over for two thousand and nineteen, is about total there in the middle of one million eighty thousand dollars. And that's what we'd like to have designated for community projects as the remaining money from the two and a half million dollars to spend in two thousand and nineteen. Clear as mud, if you know what I mean.
Yeah. Well, four hundred and seventy thousand of it is money that we budgeted this year that we need to carry over to next year.
Correct.
And then the other six hundred and ten thousand is what's remaining out of our two and a half million that we haven't budgeted.
Correct.
And I think it is crystal clear when you look at it that way.
No one can come through that door after you've shot.
Bill, you want to prop that door back open?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, this is a recommendation that came from Greater Decatur and Greg was-
Explain-
...this evening and present that.
Explain the council a little bit up at the top there. The six hundred and ten thousand, the hundred thousand matching funds for Okra grant for Second Street, street scape revitalization. That is a possibility of, that's what, what percentage cost share?
Roughly twenty percent. Okra has a grant program available for street scape. It's roughly five hundred thousand dollars that we can apply for. It does require some matching funds, so should Main Street and the city decide to go forward with this grant in two thousand and nineteen, there's some matching funds that could go along with that grant application.
Okay. And then there's two hundred and fifty thousand for Hannah Nutman?
Correct.
And thirty thousand for the sound system for the Madison Street Plaza?
Yes.
And then it leaves that additional amount. And you know, in that additional amount, while it's not been designated for anything, just like in that Okra grant where we have to have matching funds of a hundred thousand, as you're out looking for grants for Hannah Nutman, for other projects, that very well could be our matching, if the Northeast Regional Partnership comes up with some money again. We were shut out on that a few years ago because we didn't have-
Matching.
-any matching funds available.
Timing just wasn't quite right.
Timing wasn't right. So I think it's great to kind of have that in reserve there, not designated exactly. So, comments from council? Would you agree with that? Yes, absolutely. Okay. So what you're here, you're not here representing the city because you're a city employee. You're here representing Greater Decatur on behalf of Greg Kitson who was supposed to be here. And you're suggesting that the six hundred and ten thousand dollars that we have not spent out of the two and a half million be designated, set aside for two thousand and nineteen budget with a hundred thousand for Okra matching grant, two hundred and fifty thousand for Hannah Nutman, thirty thousand for the sound system at Madison Street Plaza, and then the last two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars for additional two thousand and nineteen community development projects.
And well of the four hundred and seventy thousand-
That's being carried over.
-being carried, being carried over-
Absolutely.
...into two thousand and nineteen.
Yep. Some comments over here, guys?
Digesting it.
Digesting it.
Craig asked a question. Who makes the final decision? In other words, the projects, the future projects, Greater Decatur makes the recommendation.
We make the okay.
Council has to okay if you're funding.
Everything that's been done on that list in the green, at one point in time has come before council. Everything that's in the orange has been approved by council at one point in time. And upcoming, the art center, as you refer to that, that is the build out in the loft apartments down here, the two hundred thousand. And then the downtown sound system. And then the things in the, in the pink, which were things, in the initial stellar project, we had a complete redo of our Monroe Street Bridge, which was adding a bunch of lighting and scalloping and fencing up to, up the bridge. I don't know if we ever will do that, okay? That was something that maybe we want to revisit, maybe we don't. The Second Street, street scape, well, that's in, in pink there, you know, part of this Okra matching grant is for street scape, so that could be something for that. I don't know what the downtown message board originally was exactly. It's not anything we've visited.
That was a large-
Message board of sorts?
A large monitor TV. To put advertising messages, be on a side of a building that's very visible. And that was the intent of that originally in the conversation.
Yep. Then we're going on down in pink. The first in Jefferson Street Riverside Park was the area south of Macklin's down to those homes. You know, we tore down houses there when we did the sewer project. We just haven't developed it into a park yet, but that's what that was. Adams Street, street scape, and I don't know if that has something to do with the Five Points.
That was in the, in two thousand and fourteen stellar, help me, Tim, that when the Five Point area would get revitalized, that that street scape work would extend on to Adams Street.
Okay. North and South Gateway would be on US twenty-seven and that's something that redevelopment commission is kind of tackling right now. They're interviewing a couple of companies to do feasibility studies on US twenty-seven on how we might enhance US twenty-seven, that corridor, to get that kind of kicked off. Next thing was a splash pad and that's something I think we all still have on our radar. It's just, right now, we're thinking Hannah Nutman. And then the last thing is the Freight Depot, which was the old Freight Depot that was next to Arnold Lumber. And it was taken down piece by piece. It was stored down at Lumberlust Construction in Geneva for many years. And then they finally said they needed to get it out of there, so it was moved by semi up to Elm Street at our Public Works Building and has been sitting outside weathering terribly ever since. And I don't know what we do with it until, I'm not going to say it publicly, I guess, but yeah, there's one person that I know may want to look into that and they're not here this evening. So that's everything. One here, is that kind of clarifying that thing?
Yeah, I'll go back to it and Melissa has stated it well as far as the, the matching funds for the Second Street scape. But just as far as Main Street, they are holding that in discussion and probably one of the first steps in that grant is to look to become on the national register downtown because that adds points to the grant, which Melissa's making some contact. We've been talking about that, but she's making some contacts, so we could see what that costs us, how to take those first steps.
There's a, there's a long list of tasks to do on this grant between city and what Main Street would want to take on, so it's still very much in the discussion phase right now if this is even something that Main Street feels like they want to pursue. So this hasn't been decided yet, but it, they're actively discussing and doing some homework on this grant.
Okay.
You know, the mention of dog park came up and I always, I'd like to see it added to a list. I think we should add it to a future list.
Is there anyone to address that? Dog park, from a park and rec perspective?
Last time I brought it up, it was not on the table.
To the park board, you mean?
Well, I think we need-
You need something that can always be looked at.
Yeah. Maybe you need park work.
I don't know. Pursued at Kikianga.
Yeah.
I think Kikianga is kind of the obvious place for it, really, you know?
Yeah. But it does need to be investigated for sure.
And I think in instances like this, or this has happened before, that if there's a person or a group or organization in the community that would like to do some planning and bring that to Greater Decatur, city council, to at least start exploring what's the location possibility, what's the cost option, all those things, we would, we would love to see a plan come forward.
Right.
And for projects like a dog park.
Right. Other communities have dog parks, so I'd be curious to see how they manage those because that's part of the issue too, is you got to, you know- But it's not a new thing at all. No, no, no. But, but, you know, you're going to have to make sure that somebody, you know, how do you clean up? How do you, do you allow any dogs, any size dogs together because, and it may be a personal preference on the part of owners whether they want a small dog or a bunch of large dogs. Well, I believe some parks even within them, they kind of have some designated- That's what I'm saying. So there, surely there are ways that you can accommodate dog owners.
If there's anybody that likes to do that homework and present to us, I think we've been, we've been-
I know somebody that's advocating a dog park in a big way and I'll contact him as if we can.
We've had you a great people that's come over and said things, you know.
Aaron Macklin, who's the champion?
Well, we had a lot, we just had a lot of experts in the room that would-
Yeah.
-know much more than some of us, so.
Yeah. Okay, even when you talk with Paul, you know, you put that.
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, so Melissa, what are you wanting from council tonight?
I would like approval for the set aside from the two and a half million in two thousand and nineteen for one million eight, eighty thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Please, as a recommendation from your indicator.
So that would be the-
That's the total of-
...funds for the resolution.
Correct. Two thousand and nineteen is the final year of the resolution, so the remainder of the funding.
And before we go any further, I think we need to also discuss extending a project like this for, beginning in two thousand and twenty and years beyond, you know, whether it's five hundred thousand dollars a year or whatever, this two and a half million dollars that we set aside for five years has proven to really benefit our community. There's been a lot of things done that's, that never would have happened if we didn't set aside this money.
And Greater Decatur certainly wants to keep that momentum going, so I anticipate in the coming months that they will work on, start working on extending this list, the to-do list and completion list, and be ready for discussions about potentially a new resolution for starting in two thousand and twenty.
And I would be ask here is moving this four hundred and seventy thousand, which really has already been designated and approved, but the ask is to move it-
Otherwise it goes bye-bye.
Right. And I'm just advising that we do that for the-
So we're encumbering it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You know, and going back to the point that Melissa just made about coming up with new projects that would start two thousand and twenty and beyond, obviously if council has ideas or suggestions, that should be certainly considered- that should be certainly considered and included. So if you guys are aware of projects, certainly bring it to Greater Decatur's attention, because typically--
Well, it's welcome to attend those meetings.
And what happened here is, these were a list of projects, most of which came out of the stellar process. And then what Greater Decatur did is, they went through and they prioritized which of those projects would be tackled first. And if you look, in Phase 1, 2, and 3, a good number of the Phase 1 and 2 projects have been completed, primarily the Phase 3 projects that are still waiting to be done. And in a couple of instances, they moved up or down based upon the timing of when the projects were to be completed. So it's not a hard and fast priority. Circumstances changed, so they adapted to that. So I think that, you know, if we get to a point where we've not completed all of these, then logically, you may carry some of these over, but the idea is, let's look ahead for another five years, and what do we need to do to continue the momentum that's been built over the last five years?
But we also need to, and we have finished what we started. Like the mayor said, we're in the infant stage of Han and Upman here. Not really the infant stage, we're ready to do this, so we need to see it through on all aspects.
Yes. So I just have one other question. I wasn't here when this resolution was passed. Where does this money come from? Is it budgeted over the five-year span?
Right. $500,000 per year, just added to the city budget.
$500,000 a year for five years, equal to two and a half.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily designated $500,000 a year, it was two and a half million over five years. So it could, if you had a major project, it could be spent more so in one year than $500,000.
Yeah, we passed it-- But $500,000 a year was put into the budget--
Right.
Correct.
And that very first year, Tyler, we weren't ready to do a lot of these things, and that's why we only spent $214,000 that year.
Right.
And the next year, we weren't quite ready. We only spent $425,000. But then, by golly, we were ready to go, and we started spending it very easily the next couple of years, so.
So in that essence, it's built into our tax base now, at the point that we're at?
Yep. And I would encourage the council to consider seriously extending us out for another five years, because you're getting a lot done. And it gives you the means, not only to do the projects, but if there are grants that come along the way, it provides a source of funding, you can go after those grants and leverage that to a greater amount.
And I think, looking long-term, as far as extending this, I think we got to kind of think outside the box. You know, if in 2015, we decided we could budget $500,000 a year, we'll be looking at this for the year 2020, okay? Is $500,000 what we can afford? Can we afford more? If we look at the list of things that people in the community are wanting us to do, I mean, you get, we get Han and Upman done, I mean, people are, the big thing everyone's asking us for right now is this water aquatics park, you know? That's four to six million dollars. And, you know, so I think, I just think that we need to kind of collaborate on this, and, you know, I think setting aside $500,000's been pretty simple for us. Do we want to challenge ourselves and up that, in an effort so that we can continue to move forward with these capital projects? More, discuss that more later, but for this evening, what you're looking for is just the approval to retain $1,080,142 for 2019 usage for capital projects. If I could have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to retain $1,080,142, carried over from 2018, and then budgeted for 2019's budget, and as part of Resolution 2015-17, I think it was? All in favor?
Aye.
Dash seven, thank you. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Took a while to get through that, but-- Council agenda, that's that.
Do you have any copy?
Yeah. If you have any questions, let us know. I'll be glad, I'll be glad, yeah. When you look at that, it may not make a lot of sense to you, but I'll be glad to explain it.
Is that your mic out, Phil?
I can hide my instructions.
Next thing I have for the third meeting in a row is a sponsorship for the Decatur Highland Games. We brought it up two meetings ago. We decided to table it, because we wanted to see how much money we had left in different funds. And then the last meeting, we decided to table it again, because we thought maybe our chamber director could speak on the behalf of the Highland Games. Let us know, you know, the $500 that we did last year was paid from my budget, the mayor's budget. I still have money that I could use for such, but in addition, council has quite a bit left in their promotional budget, so give us your sales pitch, chamber director, and then we won't have you vote in this.
That's right. I'll have to refuse myself. October 6 will be Decatur's second annual Highland Games. At this time, we're taking athletes' applications and signing waivers so that they can start practicing. I think as of this time today, we have five males, and then about 13 females so far at this time.
And women are showing them up, huh?
Yeah, right now. We've had sign-up--
Everybody afraid of Shifley?
No, I don't think so. In fact, I don't know exactly if that amount's correct. They're going to have a practice out there tonight on the field and sign up some more. I gave them 20 more applications, so I think it's really going to--
It'll go whole.
We've got bagpipes starting at 11 o'clock, and it'll go on, it'll be quite a show. We've got electrical boxes out there, two 200 amp services that, four committees, the Calathumpian, the Chamber, the Main Street, two others, Kikianga and Parks and Recs. And we also applied for a grant, so we have electrical power out there at Riverside Center in two different locations, so it should really make it a more accommodating type of--
Okay.
We're also going to have a bounce house for the kids and all that festival stuff, and it should be quite a deal.
Is there any, do they need more money?
Yes.
So would you be willing to--
For the event--
--more than $500?
Yeah.
And I think it was a great event. For a year long, you would have thought it was year five.
My insurance policy says we had 999 people at that event.
So I'm saying it might grow a little bit, but I'm just saying I have to kind of keep that under. I don't do that count.
I'd like to make a motion to grant $1,000 from council funds, and let the event continue to grow.
What I have is a motion from Matt--
It's ringing in my ear. Couldn't hear what he was saying.
I have a motion from Matt on the table here to increase our sponsorship level from the bronze level to the gold level, a $1,000 donation, and that would come from the city council promotional budget.
Correct.
So a motion and a second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Craig did not vote, for matter of record.
Thank you.
And I'm going to check that, and I'll get this to you tomorrow, Craig.
Thank you.
Next thing I have is, in addition to the Highland Games, we have a Calathumpian event forum somewhere else? Yeah. Calathumpian event forum for this year's Calathumpian, oh, it's not an event forum, it's a request. Hey, they want money. How about that? Doggone chamber, I tell you. Calathumpian great, it's begun their fundraising--
It's a Calathumpian committee.
Calathumpian committee. Calathumpian committee continues to strive to make the festival larger and more enjoyable each year, which also equates to generating more funding. The last two years, our expenses have been over $20,000. Our largest expenses include the very popular fireworks extravaganza and parade night prize and appearance money for the bands, some of which commute a lengthy distance. The band money fluctuates depending upon how many bands appear. Committee member Mike Gumm assists in helping us determine the proper funds to use to procure ample bands for our prestigious parade. It seems our expenses continue to rise, and donations received seem to dwindle each year. We continue to look for corporate sponsors for the fireworks show or other projects, but have not found any other that wish to tackle the amount needed to fund these events that truly make Halloween synonymous with Decatur. The committee would like to ask the city of Decatur to consider a $1,000 donation this year to support the fireworks extravaganza. If this is not a possibility, we'd ask that you consider the $500 donation again this year. However, last year, Phyllis looked it up, and we gave $750 last year. So that's where we're at, folks. Well, last year, we gave $750,000. It came again from the city council promotional--
$750,000.
$750,000. Too many meetings tonight. Too many meetings tonight. We're going to have a hangover festival. Okay, let me rephrase this. Last year, city council, from their promotional budget, gave $750. And would you like to do the same this year? Would you like to increase it to $1,000?
I think what we have budgeted, we could do the $1,000 request.
Yeah, I think you guys, you increased your budget last year for this very reason, I think.
And this event covers so much, and so many people involved--
I concur.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead with the $1,000.
Tyler makes the motion that we be a sponsor for $1,000, and Wiley seconds the motion. And Craig, you probably should recuse yourself again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. So we'll be doing $1,000 this year from the council budget. Okay, that's that. And then, last thing, when it comes to events, believe it or not, the concerts have gone so well that--
Let me--
Craig, yeah, go ahead, Craig.
I had an opportunity here the last, if you've been to the Thursday Night Concert Series with the, which follows the Farmer's Market, this town is booming. There are a lot of very happy people downtown on Thursday afternoons and evenings. I mean, I think it's a cool deal. We've got food vendors, people are happy, they're smiling. I think it's a good thing. In fact, it made such an impact on one family that I've, that I know, that they called up and said, hey, Koshaw, there's these guys. They're called Dueling Pianos. They're out of Saginaw, Michigan, and they sent me a YouTube video clip. You ever been to Howl at the Moon or one of those Dueling Piano bars? I mean, it's an interactive show, and they get the crowd involved. This family said, I will sponsor this thing if you will get these guys here. Well, about 30 minutes later, contract was being sent, got it booked. So I would like permission to have one more show on September 27, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. But it's a three-hour show. We can play that by ear with the, with the light, you know, with, with the sunlight.
We will have--
We're going to wait in our closet at that time. But I'd like permission to add that show to it, and then we'll publicize it and get it out there.
I'll make a motion to add the additional show for September 27, to the event forum.
I have a motion and a second for that, and again, I would imagine Craig will recuse himself for my vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Okay. During this evening, the Board of Works met and suggested to recommend to city council the approval for me to proceed with getting appraisals at the Decatur casting site, and so I would just like to run that by council and make sure that--
You have to have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Statute requires two public hearings, one by Board of Works, one by council.
So we already did it. Do we need to have it now? We already did the one for the--
You did it for--
Can we get one the same--
You did one for Board of Works.
Okay, so, and what I'm asking council then is, are they okay to schedule a public hearing for August 7th for the topic of--
Which authorizes consideration to sale of casting and obtaining appraisals, which is a necessary step in the process of getting it sold.
Why would it take the self-property for your city?
I know.
What's this called, a resolution or--
It's just scheduling, a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the sale of property of Decatur-- Just to discuss getting appraisals? To discuss getting appraisals. You don't-- For Decatur casting. Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I want to make mention real quick, Tim and I have talked about this a little bit, on that property, there is a cell tower. And when that cell tower was purchased, actually, I guess it was there when the casting company was there. When they went out, that cell tower was sold to a company, and it's being used. And at the time, the county still had their name on the title of that land, so it was sold to them for $900,000. The first year--
$90,000.
$90,000. Here I go again.
$9 billion.
$9 billion. It was leasing. It was a perpetual lease. Perpetual lease. For $90,000, the first year, they paid the county $30,000. Second year, they paid the city $30,000. Third year, they paid the city $30,000. However, there was no contingency in there about buying the land that it's on, so we still own the land. So when we do the survey for, or the appraisal on this, we want to do it in two separate parcels, because no one would want to buy that piece with the cell tower on that parcel. Am I saying this right? We want a parcel, do two parcels.
Why wouldn't we want to keep it?
We don't have the option.
Yeah.
The county entered into an agreement with Crown, whatever the name of the company is--
EDI or something.
--that they would obtain a perpetual easement for $90,000. So they paid that over three years, which is what they were required to do. Now they've got the easement forever, until they decide they no longer want the tower. So there's nobody that's going to pay for that ground, because you can't use it.
Right. Now, I see.
So we'll carve that out and do an appraisal on the rest of the property, and then we can go to Crown and say, okay, here's what this appraised for, are units are set in buying it? And maybe they will, but, you know--
They don't pay taxes on it or anything, you know?
They may on the tower itself.
I know, that's what I forgot. So--
Always make one of them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure--
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
So you got a motion and a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That is all I have. Tim, you have some things?
I've got a couple of things. The, can ask me to consider our handicap parking ordinance, and to put at least one, if not two, parking spaces on Second Street near Madison. That's something that you guys may want to think about. I don't know if you're prepared to make a decision on how to do that. I drafted one for a space immediately north of Madison Street Plaza, and one immediately south on the east side. However, I suggested that the mayor contact the businesses in that area about that, and there may be some resistance to putting two there. I don't know if there's a possibility of putting one across the street or along--
Or two, south, immediately south of Madison Street. The first two spaces south of Madison Street, both handicap. What was the other?
It was in part to try to address the concerns raised by Kevin and Missy Burkholder for handicap parking near--
Andy's.
Andy's. We're working with Biggs on redesigning the parking lot to try to provide some public parking spaces in the new parking lot that would be closer to Madison Street Plaza, rather than dedicate those to the tenant parking. So we're trying to find ways to provide some parking near there, since we're closing down the street for parking on the Madison Street Plaza. So it's your call in terms of handicap parking and where you want it. I just need to know if you have--
Again, this was, this is, the reason we're doing this was, the evening that we sat here and we voted to close Madison Street to traffic, and Missy was here, and I looked her in the eye and said, we'll do everything we can to work with you. So as part of working with Missy, I'm trying to establish a few additional handicap spaces. And I think likely the two spaces immediately in front of Prestige Realty would be the two closest spaces to Andy's Conys. So, go ahead.
My personal feeling that I think a handicap spot on Second Street, to me, is a waste, because why does any handicap person want to get out on the busiest street we have in town?
Where would you suggest that we put--
Maybe something back here in the Spur Street parking lot?
She's not really in favor of that.
I know, but, I mean-- I know, but, I mean.
It may not be the driver that is handicapped in this case. Oftentimes, it's the, the person working there with Andy that's the handicap person and they're not driving.
You're telling me that this, that the one on Second Street is closer than the one on First Street?
To Andy's?
Yeah.
Yeah. Andy's is this side of the alley.
It's not a whole lot closer, but it's probably a little bit closer.
And I guess the resistance.
I agree with you, Tim, Ken, but I don't think I'd do any ordinance until it make it accommodating for a handicap person to get inside your door. I mean, don't get me wrong, I say we'll, we'll watch it and we, we don't draft up anything until we see that change and then I think that we make that.
Or we have a parking lot that if the.
Right, what's that parking lot going to look like?
Or use the parking lot across the street where we're talking about.
The new parking lot that's being built, which won't be finished.
It'd just be a matter of striping.
Well, but there's a lot more to it than doing that because that's being, half of it's being leased to Biggs. And there's going to be certain spaces designated. And we've had, you were there the day I had the meeting. And we have gotten the two spaces at the farthest south point, furthest east point, first two or three spaces.
Three.
Three spaces designated for public parking. Okay, we've done that. Now, that won't even happen for probably at least a year because Biggs' closing date continues to get pushed back and the parking lot is the last thing that's going to be built in that project. So in the meantime, that parking lot really is not a factor.
Okay.
So the other options, you know, there's no parking in the Legion Lot. So the other options are either Second Street or our First Street parking lot, which is further away.
And if there are handicap right there in front of three.
Community foundation. No, no.
Jeremy, I'd like your opinion.
There never was a spot on Madison that we ever, never seen or ever having. Never had any.
No, out on Madison.
There, there never was. I don't understand what they appreciate or have that, four or five of them. There is a couple spots.
It would let to be Andy's parking, not handicap.
You know, it's hard to say what kind of room's going to be available on Biggs Lot. You know, we'll have after that.
We'll have the west half of that.
Yeah.
With exception of those three spaces that Biggs has agreed to give us.
Probably four or five years ago, we took the spots off of Second Street because cars want by.
And wasn't it different?
We had a spot in front of the courthouse that we had moved around the corner because there was a couple of people that were just about to get, getting out. Right in front of the courthouse, a few spots, two or three spots up the police. And the one on the very end toward Madison was in the camp. We had to help the very folks call, so we moved that around the corner and the first spot there on Madison to give them more of an off-street, give them more of a chance that they were getting out slow and they got out in front of the car. So you think that would be the same case if it was in front of Prestige Realty, then it would be a? It's a good possibility.
Yeah, that's what the, that's Tyler's. I'm not a handicapper. I don't like getting out of vehicles. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's not.
I think this needs further investigation.
Okay. I can talk to Missy more. Yeah, well, I've done everything I can.
I don't know that that's needed at this point. We just need to.
No, that's fine.
I just wouldn't do anymore right now.
Okay, I understand she has concerns, but I made the comment to her when she was here, that it's a good time to be in the hot dog business. And recently, I've been there, they got people out the door to buy hot dogs.
That's right.
Madison Street.
I don't think it's truly a handicap spot.
As Craig mentioned, it's not a handicap accessible building.
It's a Andy's spot. Does doors. They can get drive-through up there and.
Their doors to the entrance to Andy's nor, or any of the doors on that building are not three foot wide. And when we put in our handicap ramp to get inside our restrooms, I contacted Missy and asked her if she wanted ramps into Andy's, Andy's or any of those other doors. And she said, no, because none of my doors are even three feet wide. So there's no reason to put an ADA ramp in. So, okay. Tim, what else you got?
Okay. We have a request from Mike Wong and his wife to vacate an easement. It's out in Water's Edge subdivision. When the plat of that subdivision was made, they own lot 18. And there's a big easement over their property, in the rear of the property, takes up about a third of their backyard, is what they said. There's nothing, nothing, no improvements have been made in the easement. They got a word of Steve Crete, who basically said, he has no objection to it being vacated. They're asking this to be vacated. To do that, they have to file a petition, which they've done. And once they do that, the statute says that you have to hold a hearing within thirty days of that being filed. They filed it on July 9th, which means we need to hold a public hearing on this at your meeting on August 7th. Okay? And at that time, then you'll have to make a determination whether you find that the easement should be vacated. It's the same process that you go through if you're going to vacate an alley or some public way.
Or been used.
What's it for?
Originally, originally, it was possibly for a walkway, utilities.
If we had, if we had that new app, we could pull that right up here.
They didn't need it.
Lot 18, 673 North Water's Edge Drive.
Basically, the guy's backyard's long and then here's the lake.
And then they own, third of an acre directly west of that lot.
Tools and stuff, yard stuff.
You familiar with it, Matt?
Go for it. Yes. I talked to the gentleman.
And they want to, they want to put a, an outbuilding back there, but they can't do it because of the easement.
What street are, are they on there, right there on Water's Edge, you said?
Cross street from Cam.
Cross the street from Cam. Okay, I got the hat pulled up here. You want to show me which lot we're talking about?
I think I know. Wonder what the neighbors think of that?
They said they, they listed the neighbors. It's all.
There's Monroe Street.
All the neighbors sign off on it?
No, this is Monroe down here.
They list the people that they talk to.
Back here on the cul-de-sac? Yeah, their backyard's this lake, so it's one of these two.
Well, I don't have a problem with homeowners.
This one or this one?
Yes. So.
And they want to put.
Ask the average high, so the adjoining property owners will be given notice. They'll have any objection.
All right, so you want to schedule.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to schedule a hearing.
August 7th.
Motion to schedule a meeting, public hearing.
Mike Wong.
As long as the neighbors didn't have a huge issue with it.
We got a motion.
So this must be the little out area right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion in a, motion in a second to, what are we going to do, schedule a public hearing for?
Probably for August 7th.
For August 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you. Tim, what else?
I'm just looking, I can't get to everything.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. How about anything from the department heads? Mike?
Um, nothing much, but we did have, we've got, we're taking applications out for a position with police department. We've got all the social media. We've had paper, but it's on, it's on your site, it's on our, you know, Facebook, Twitter. So we're, we're good with that. But I think we got about four thousand more.
Remind me, I want to talk to you about that. Okay? Okay. Billy, you got anything?
Uh, they're currently drilling the fourth well off the new wellfield.
Ching, good deal. All right. Kevin?
I'm good.
Les?
I'm good.
Melissa?
Good.
Jim?
Good.
Don?
I think I want to look at that easement before we.
Have the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can show it to you on the.
We're looking at it right now.
Okay, all right.
We need to go out there and.
Yeah. All right. Anna?
Because they had brought in equipment for the, for the clarifier.